Good evening Brewster community and thank you for coming to tonight's town hall meeting. Let me start by saying that Brewster is a good school district and community with wonderful children, families, educators, and staff. Tonight's town hall meeting was organized to make sure that the recent incident involving a disturbing video made by four students who graduated in June is not an image that eclipses all the good deeds initiated by children, parents, educators, and staff in the community. The other purpose of this meeting is to clarify the purpose of the new logo associated with our strategic coherence plan which was adopted last March. The ultimate goal this evening is to make sure that all children know that our schools are committed to ensuring that they are safe, valued, and cared for regardless of who they are. The school district is taking the lead by convening this town hall meeting with the hope that the community at large joins us in preserving those things that we all can claim with pride and resist those things that divide us. After tonight's meeting, we hope that some of you join a task force to develop ways to strengthen the community and continue to help our children to grow up to become honorable people. Before we start our program, I just want to point out to you on the table near the exit we're pointing to, there are index cards and the index cards will be used this evening so that we can get as many questions asked answered as possible. So if you didn't get an index card at some point in the next few minutes, if you can go over and get an index card and a pencil and write your questions down, I'll tell you about the format for that. Dr. James Ryan, who's the superintendent of Putnam Northern Westchester BOCES, is our moderator and I'd like to thank him for taking the time out to serve in this role. We have a number of panelists who are here to answer questions that represent the two issues that we'll be discussing tonight. In a few moments, Dr. Stephen Jambore, our Board of Education President, will provide an overview of some of the thoughts about the recent events. After the panelists answer a number of questions that have been prepared in advance, we will collect those questions that you've written on the index cards and we will answer as many of those as possible. You can pick up the card and hold on to it and it'll be collected by an administrator when we get to that point in our hour. We have to end at 6:25 because we have a board meeting that starts at 6:30 and please feel free to stay for that board meeting if you wish, which will also be here in the Performing Arts Center. If we don't get to your index card, we will create a question and answer document of questions that were not answered and distribute that document through our Bear Backpack Distribution Flyer System and will also add it to our website. Now I'd like to introduce the panelists this evening. And in case you don't know them, they're going to make some kind of appropriate gesture to indicate their names. And again, I'd like to thank them for coming. Took you a little while to get there. Father Richard Gill, St. Lawrence O'Toole Catholic Church. Rabbi Lori Gold, Temple Beth Elom. Elohim, thank you. Pastor Ray Millet, Grace Assembly God Church. Pastor Travis Mitchell, First Baptist Church. Deacon Charles Germain, Trinity Boothman Church. Ms. Anne Marie Kowalewski, Parent and PTA President. Ms. Shawna Bill, Parent and PTA President. Mr. Kevin Callahan, Realtor. Mr. George Shawn, Community Member and Student Advocate. Dr. Stephen Jambore, President of the Brewster Board of Education. Ms. Mary Kay Nielsen, Brewster Board Trustee. Ms. Kristen Kakau, Brewster Board Trustee. Mr. Richard Williams Senior Supervisor Town Patterson, who's here as a private citizen rather than, and his role is elected official. Ms. Lynn Eckhart, Councilwoman, Town Southeast, again, here as a private citizen rather than an elected official. Could we please welcome them this afternoon, this evening, and thank them for coming out Before we start the questions, Dr. Jambore, Board of Education Trustee and President, would like to start by framing the issues that we'll be discussing this evening and followed by Dr. Jambore. Dr. Ryan will come up and we'll start the questions. Thank you.
Good evening everyone. I'll be very brief. It takes a community to raise a child that we know. During the past 18 years, we have tried to build our schools and our programs to help ensure that our children have the best life possible. Recently, we hit a couple of speed bumps. A seven second video clip appears and goes viral. People from far away like Oklahoma and South Carolina contact us and criticize us for being a racist community. That's all they know about us. At the same time, and on a lighter note by comparison, we're asking ourselves questions about our logo. Altogether, I'd like to suggest, we might consider that we are thinking about our identity. Namely, who are we? Where are we going as a school community? What do we have to do to get there? And how do we want to represent ourselves? We are reminded as we face these questions and take heart in knowing that no one is born hating someone else because of their skin color or their religion or their creed or ethnicity. Racism is learned. And in fact, it is easier to learn to get along with one another than it is to hate as the former is more in our constitution as human beings. As a school community, we have moved past the three Rs, reading, writing, and arithmetic. We embrace the four Cs, communication, collaboration, critical thinking, creative problem solving. And in fact, we even challenge ourselves to go one step further to pursue the heart of the matter which is caring. Caring about each person, caring about our children, caring about our community, and caring about how the world knows us. Thank you. Dr. Ryan.
Thank you. I'm delighted to join you this evening and serve as moderator. As the district superintendent of schools, I work with the 18 school districts of Putnam Northern Westchester. And I'll just mention a little bit on top of what Val mentioned and I'll just go a step further and say, Brewster is beyond good. This is a much better than good district that's heading toward great. And as Steve mentioned, some speed bumps, that's what they are, but the reality is this is an outstanding location to raise children, to educate children, and to grow a community, which is really what's happening here. And happy to be here tonight to join in this. We're going to start today's panel discussion with Father Gill, Rabbi Gold, and Pastor Mitchell. And I just wanted to say that you're aware of the troubling video by four Brewster students who graduated in June. What advice would you give the community about how to heal and ensure that adults do not pass on bigotry and hatred to our students and children?
Well, I would say that many of us know some of those kids and we know that they're really not racists. But I think attitudes sometimes linger deep down. Things we pick up and things we somehow reflect sometimes. Certainly wasn't on the level of what we saw in Charlottesville, but it's still something very, very sad. And I would say that one thing we can all do as a community is make sure that we're not ignorant of people who are different from us. You know, if we don't have friends and associates that we deal with regularly who are from other races, we're really dropping the ball ourselves as adults. We have to be familiar with people and we have to deal with them with great respect. And I think that's why we pass on to them. If we've got friends and coworkers, people we have over our home who are from different races, then I think we'll be really educating our kids well in that respect. But I'd like to say one more thing, that I think, you know, there's that old saying, "In vino veritas," when you drink, the truth comes out. I think that applies more to adults. I think when kids drink, stupid things come out. And I would say we've got a bigger problem with drinking and drugs in this community that reveal sometimes bad attitudes that are inside. The drugs especially. In the past month, I buried two young men for overdoses of drugs, one in Pot Lake and one here in Brewster. And I just heard about another one, 29 year old, who died of drugs over in Pot Lake just recently. I think those are the real epidemics that we have to address.
Well, thank you for inviting me. It's a real pleasure to be here tonight and sad that there's a reason like this that we have to be here, but I'm glad to be here. I want to say that one, the most important thing, it's one of the four Cs that we just mentioned, and that is communication. I think that's key and I think it's a good start that we're here today for an hour, but it's going to take many more hours and I think that our faith communities, our secular communities have to continue to have this dialogue because without this dialogue, we're not going to get anywhere. I think the best and easiest way not to pass on bigotry is to not be a bigot. That might sound like a glib answer, but that's really the bottom line. I think that most people who are bigoted, who have hate in their hearts for other people because of their color or their religion or ethnic background, you name the group, they don't even admit that they are prejudiced. They say, "Well, this other group, you know, is X, Y, and Z and I should hate them." And I think it's, it takes a lot of soul searching to really admit to ourselves that we have these prejudices. There's a play off Broadway that some of you might have seen called Avenue Q and it says, "Everybody's a little bit racist." And I don't know if I'd go that far to say it, but I think that everybody, including myself, we have some prejudices that we're not even aware of. The Jewish holidays are coming up, the High Holidays next month, and one of the things that we Jews are supposed to do is do some soul searching, sometimes called an accounting of the soul. And we're supposed to look really deeply and honestly and say to ourselves, "What can I do to be better?" And I think an important question is, "What kind of hate do I have that I'm not even admitting it?" Because I think very often we pass on to our children and our grandchildren and our nieces and nephews prejudices that we don't even admit to ourselves. So there's no reason that they're not prejudiced also. And as you might have read, recently it was passed around as a link, most of us, when we hate people, when we're prejudiced, because we don't know anything about that group or all that we know is our stereotypes and falsehoods. So I agree with Father here that we need to meet people who are different from us. And I just want to say one more thing. Well, maybe I just wanted, speaking of Broadway shows, I'm a big fan of theater. Oscar Hammerstein wrote in 1949 this beautiful song that some of you might remember from South Pacific, and the words are true today. "You've got to be taught to hate and fear. You've got to be taught from year to year. It's got to be drummed in your dear little ear. You've got to be carefully taught."
Thank you, Val, for the invitation to be here. My advice to this community would be what I said to my nine year old son just recently. He is black. And he was watching me, watching the computer, some of the news regarding Charlottesville. And he comes to me and says, "Daddy, why are they yelling and screaming?" And I responded and said, "Well, some people think they're better than other people because of the color of their skin." And he says, "Don't they know that's not right?" And I said, "Well, some people don't know that yet. They learned that." And then he says, "Oh, they need to know that everyone is special because God made them special." And I said, "That's exactly what they need to know." And my son got that through just conversations with me, but there's a book that I would highly recommend, the children's book. So if you have young kids or young grandkids, it's simply, it's called "You're Special." Not because I say you're special or someone else says you're special, but the story is about a wooden person who lives in a village where people put stickers, gold stars or ugly gray dots. And he notices that one wooden person, when they get stickers, they fall off and he gets all these ugly dots. And so he goes to this wooden person and says, "How come these stickers never stick on you?" He's like, "Well, every day I go see the woodworker and he gives me a special message. He says, 'You should go see him too.'" And so one day he went and he learned that he was special, just the way he is because the one who made him said he was special. And so all these stickers began to fall and wouldn't stick. So that's what my son said that. So that's my advice, that treat people because they are created by a wonderful maker, your wonderful maker, and you're special. And those that may not see you as special or may see other people not, they're still special because God made them and we want to treat one another with respect.
Thank you. This question is for Pastor Millet, Deacon Germain, and Mr. Shawn. How can the community come together to make sure that all children feel valued, safe, supported by the community?
Well, I think it's all about relationship, about loving one another, relating to one another, and things are caught better than taught. And what they see in our lives, the demonstration that we have. I grew up in the 60s in the height of the Vietnam War and it was a troubled time, just maybe not even 10 miles from my house was Plainfield, New Jersey. I drove through the town with my father and saw people flipping cars over and burning things and it was a pretty radical time. And it wasn't long before I adopted an attitude of, you know, tune in, turn on, and drop out. And ended up going into the, becoming a hippie and hard to believe an old guy like this was a hippie. But had a radical change that took place in my life. Here I had chopped off all the values of society and we were coming up with our own meanings and stuff. And then somebody came along with a Bible and we began to embrace something else. At a moment when, when I thought all was lost, my son was born two months premature. They gave him a 50/50 chance to live. And I knew my belief systems that were just God is energy and there's no real relationship with Him and stuff. And I remember crying out to him and saying, "Lord, if you're the God and Father of the Lord Jesus Christ and you're the God I knew as a kid, I need help. I know all of the things that I'm doing aren't going to do anything for Him." And he came through that. And that was kind of the push and shove for me to take a look at things differently. I mean, we talk about, we want to educate the kids and let them see life as it really is and to see the values in society. And yet what we're seeing in society is anything but a real demonstration of unity, of love, of diversity, and embracing one another. And I believe that really comes back to a foundation of seeing like, for a worldview, it deals with origin, meaning, morality, and destiny. And our origin, really to see that we were created in the image of God, that we look around us and we're all different and yet all created in His image. And really having that sense there, it can create within us a realization that the lowest dregs of society are still those that are created in the image of God and the greatest people in society are created in the image of God. And when we see the value in one another and you meet one another and you embrace that value, it's, and it's not phony, it's not trying to put on virtues that you don't have, it's just a recognition. And something takes place. And for you young people here, I love that you're here and embrace the whole idea that there's a great future before you. So parents grab ahold of that, that we're going to teach by our example and I think we need to be salt and light.
Good afternoon. I was struggling with this question when I first read it. And then while I was trying to think what I was going to say, my daughter, who called me, who gave birth two weeks ago, to ask me to come down and babysit for the grandkid next week. And it struck me that we're concerned about kids being valued, feeling safe, and being supported. The first place where that happens is their parents, or whoever the caring adults are for those people. This little baby is going to be held in the arms of a mom for a couple of years before it starts running around, walking, and she's going to learn in those first two years a lot of things from our parents. The place where kids learn values is mostly at home, we find that. It's very important. As they become adolescents, things change a little bit. They start pushing their parents' buttons just to see what's going to happen. I think parents all know that. That sometimes becomes a tough time for people. So I think what we can do as a community is help support those parents in having conversation with the young people, providing safe places where people can feel unconditionally loved and come and ask tough questions. That might be in a church or synagogue or some other venue like that, not necessarily in a school setting. So I think that's one of the things we have to do as a community, provide a place to have those tough conversations with these kids. As I thought about the issues and the questions that are raised this evening, I thought about the importance of affirming children. And affirmation really begins in the most important school of all, you might say, and that is the school of the home and the family. The children need affirmation. They need to live in an environment where there is affection. And children who live sometimes in situations where there's a lot of discord, arguments, a lot of drinking perhaps, and all kinds of things that are not healthy for children, they take that all in. It's like a process of osmosis and it forms them or doesn't form them so well. And so we have to look at our own homes and ask ourselves, "Am I creating an atmosphere that promotes growth?" I have a garden around my house. I love the garden. I give it a lot of attention and I can create something beautiful. I don't have to spend a lot of money to do it, but I can create something beautiful if I attend to it. If I don't attend to it, I'll have weeds all over the place and it won't be so beautiful. And I think that's true in our life, in our families, in our homes. If our homes are beautiful because there's truly affection and there is affirmation, affirmation of the child for who he or she is, then you're going to have a beautiful garden and children will absorb attitudes that will bring them through life. Community also involves the school. And if every teacher looks at every child and sees their inner goodness and affirms it, that's a major contribution. And also the churches have so much that they can provide and also addressing the importance of hospitality and welcoming and respect. One of the words we don't hear much in this country is the word humility, because I think we often think humility means "I'm weak." But humility is something beautiful and it involves respect, kindness, hospitality, and it's the opposite of arrogance. And as I thought about the video, I thought, you know, young people, their brains are still in the process of formation. They're not fully developed yet, so they can do foolish things and not think about it. But on the other hand, most young people don't do those kinds of things. So you have to think about, what about the self-esteem of that person or those persons? Do they really esteem themselves? If I really have self-esteem and it's good self-esteem, I don't have to put anybody down. I don't have to say, "I'm better than you because my sneakers are costing $150 and yours are $29," or whatever it may be. I don't have to think I'm better or think that I'm superior if I really can love myself and really believe in my own goodness. So I think that's the task of the community, to affirm on every level, to affirm the goodness of each person and to guide, for parents to provide the atmosphere and to guide and to cultivate their own children's souls and their hearts. Thank you.
Each clergy was asked to consider the next question and perhaps there are some specific suggestions you have to offer with regard to parents and steps they could take to comfort their children who might be anxious, angry, or afraid as a result of locally here, this video, or similar issues that are occurring around the country. Are there any specific thoughts that you had on that?
I'll tell you what I do with my kids. One is, for my oldest, I would, when he gets, goes to school, sometimes he gets nervous, scared. I say, "Let's pray." He prays a lot. I have even taken him to JFK across the street and hopefully I was okay, Val, and we walked around the school praying together. That gave him great comfort. Another thing that I do with my kids is I ask them, "What are their fears, their frights, their concerns?" And we might go to a river or a lake and I said, "Let's identify them." And then he might have five or six and then he says, "All right, let's throw them into the water. Let's see how far you can throw." He likes that. And then I say, "As you throw, you're releasing it, all right? You're releasing to the one who loves you more than you can even imagine, the one who loves you more than I even love you." And so just knowing that there's a releasing, that I'm under the protection of my wonderful maker is, those are two specific ones. And then another one, I mentioned earlier, that book, "You're Special." I think today there were like five copies in the Brewster library that you could get. But yeah, that was a very comforting book. So that's what I would say.
Hello, is it on? Okay. I think it's important to let our children, children in our community, know that they can talk honestly and safely to us. I think I can speak for all the clergy here when I say that our doors are open, our doors are open to the children and to their families to talk to us about these very painful things. I think the worst thing that we could do for our children is to shut them up and say, "Everything will be okay." I think it's important, as in all cases, when children are anxious or upset or sad about anything, we should give them free rein to talk about their feelings, to cry, to punch a wall, whatever they need to do in a safe environment to get out their feelings. And I think it's important also to be honest. We can say things like, "Yes, there's racism in our country, that we have a history of racism, but there are good people working against it." We can give them, depending on their age, we can give them storybook, picture books or other books about Dr. Martin Luther King and other people who fought against racism and people like Dr. Abraham Joshua Heschel, who was a rabbi and he worked with Martin Luther King. That's a book that I've talked about, a children's book that I've given to the Jewish children I know. And I think people should know that, yes, there are racists out there, but there are also people working really hard against racism. And I think the bottom line is communicate, let kids know that they can always come to us with their problems and their concerns.
I would just say, don't worry so much about protecting them. This may not sound right, but tell them to get used to it. We're imperfect people, we're an imperfect country, but all the great strides we made in the 1860s and the 1960s in race relations have been achieved because people were courageous and they took it as a center. and they took it as a sense of mission, that they had to do something about it. And we've got a task still ahead of us, you know, to eradicate these things. So give the kids a sense that they've got, and their life's work cut out for them, because this is an ongoing process. And we need courage, and we need unity, and we need to be determined to do that.
Thank you. I believe you need to, that we need to just allow them to talk, and know that it's a safe place to hear them out. A lot of times, we can feel like we have all the answers, we just want to quick-fix things. I found that out with my wife, that when she would be talking to me and saying some stuff, I'm formulating an answer to help fix something. Men are fixers. Found out, she wasn't looking for me to fix anything, she just wanted me to listen. Wow, what a concept. But to look at our kids and to hear them out, and to dialogue with them, and it can't be just when the crisis comes up. I mean, there's a lot of stuff on television that are just, we've lost any moral fabric of our society today, and it's because it's been reduced to relative values, and there's no standard for truth. And yet we know that there is a bottom-line standard for truth. And so watching television programs with your kids and just, "Well, what do you think about that?" Finding how they think, and what they're thinking, and then without reacting to it, just looking, and hopefully you'll have the right principles and right answers to say, "Well, you know, I look at it this way." And even sharing some of our own faults and things from our lives where we said, "You know, this happened to me," and becoming vulnerable for our kids, not trying to look like we're the perfect ones, but looking that we value them, and we do have answers. And if we don't, we need to, as parents, deceive them. Thank you.
Thank you. Parent-teacher associations play an important role in schools. We have with us this evening two PTA representatives, Ann Marie Kowalski and Shawna Beal. We just want to start by asking the question, can the PTA do things to help parents have conversations with children about bigotry and hatred? What would your thoughts be there?
Yeah, I think, actually Shawna and I, and Carla, who's not here this evening, as a whole, we do that. We hold assemblies throughout the year, throughout the district, character-based, anti-bullying. And what we can do is encourage parents to take, talk to your students after those assemblies about what they got from them. We spend quite a bit of money throughout the year on cultural arts programs, whether it be plays, or speakers. The high school had a wonderful speaker regarding a book that the school wide read for the high school last year, all about encouraging the different diversities that we face. And I think it's important, as parents, we agree that you should follow up with the students to promote and see how they feel about what they've learned. And I think that starts, like we said, with them talking to you and the parents listening.
Thank you.
I spoke for Shawna. There's your dad.
It's a tag team there. Okay. Well, sticking with the PTA, there is tremendous diversity here in the Brewster district, in the Brewster community. What steps might the PTA take to assist in bringing families together?
Like I said, we do a lot of community events in the evenings and on the weekend. It includes families as a whole. We don't segregate who can come. I mean, it's usually grade-based, but your parents are welcome, grandparents, family if they're visiting. It's usually free, sponsored by the PTAs, or it's a nominal charge. So we do a lot of community events in that aspect to foster that kind of relationship.
Thank you. Lynn Eckert and Rich Williams were introduced earlier as public officials, but here, as private citizens, they do play a role in two respective towns here locally. But as private citizens, we just asked the question, your sense of whether the video is a single isolated incident, is it part of a larger issue within our community? And if so, how might it be addressed?
First, thank you all for having us here. This is a very important topic for the community. From what I understand, because I have not seen the video, it was just an isolated incident by a few dumb kids. And I would hope that the community acknowledges that. I see people shaking their head. But I will tell you this, I didn't see the video intentionally, because when you do something like that, for me anyway, that just empowers the kids who did this. And I hope that the parents have enough sense to take the kids out to the woodshed and explain the facts of life to them. But I don't see this in my community. I think we have a very diverse but inclusive community. And I will say this, I went up on the website today because I saw the test results were out for the student tests. And the first thing I saw is how the test results were given based on female, male, black, Asian, white. When we, as a people, stop categorizing people, we will be making headway against racism. We should see each other as people, and not in categories.
Yes, I'd first like to thank everyone for having us here. And I particularly like to tell the audience, parents especially, I am in awe. It was a much simpler time when I brought up my son. I don't know how you do it today. I really don't know how you do it. So my hat is off to you, first of all. I also want to say that I am speaking, I know it's been reiterated and reiterated, but I am only speaking as Lynn Eckert, not as your councilwoman. The one thing I would like to bring up is, well, do I see it as pervasive in our town? I knock on a lot of doors every year doing canvassing, and I have seen problems. Overall, I see such a caring community. I see so many people who are welcoming. When I am knocking on their door, when they're about to have dinner, they're about, they're watching a football game. So I see incredibly welcoming people in this community. So I look for the best in this community. I wish there were a simple solution, and I know there isn't, but the one thing I would urge parents to do, if you can, and your day is so jam-packed, and everything is instant gratification, but if you can get your kids interested in volunteer work, whatever that may be, and it should only be something they're really interested in, that they love to do, because I think public service for me, and I know for Rich, is such an honor, but there are all sorts of ways you can give back. And once you start giving back to the community, you get so much more back in return. So I would really like to urge you to trot and to get your children to do volunteer work or public service of some sort. Thank you.
The school officials invited this panel because they have a sincere passion for building a stronger community, a more united community. And to Ms. Eckert and Mr. Williams, comments on any steps that the district could take, or could take collectively, to build a stronger, more united community.
I think I just covered that, and you've been sitting here a long time, but I really would urge, as I said, volunteerism, public service. I do think it's a very tightly-knit community. I'm amazed, because I've been here almost 39 years, at how much it's grown, and how many good things still are going on. So other than that, I will pass my question.
And I will say, I wish I had an answer to that, because I have a community that is somewhat divided. I've seen my friends from Putnam Lake are here. And I wrestle with this all the time, because we have gone from a community that has a rich history to one that is very transient. I have seen over my lifetime here, people move in, they raise their children here, they realize they can't afford to live in a community, and they move out. And that makes it very, very difficult to pull a community together. But I do agree with Lynn that things that we can do are encourage children to, you know, our young adults rather, to get into public service. And certainly, if you reach out to the towns, we have a large number of tasks that we can have them doing as summer interns, which also would, you know, help them, you know, in their future life, to have a better understanding of government.
Thank you. Mr. Callahan, you have a unique perspective on the area as a Realtor here locally. You've spent a lot of time talking to prospective homeowners and businesses who are interested in buying homes or starting businesses in this area. What's important to them about a community's image?
Well, I'd say what's really important when someone's looking to buy a home in the area is the school system. They'll look through the school system to see how had the children done before, and I can speak firsthand, I have three children who went through the Bruce Central Schools and they're sick, and they've done very well. So people are concerned with the community as well. How do people relate to one another? And I think it's, from what I, my experience in the village and the town southeast in Patterson, works well. I deal primarily with commercial real estate, so I deal with investors who are making huge investments in this area, and they are just as concerned. What's the community like? How well will the business do? So it is very important for both the residential and the commercial side, how the community is, but I do believe we are doing very well.
Is there an impact that a video like the one in question today has on a community? And what would your thoughts be there?
Well, it definitely would have an impact, and it would not be a positive impact. I know the video was, came out in early July. I have spoken to a number of people who are looking to make investments in this community, and no one has made a comment about seeing it or reading it in the paper. So it's, I have not seen anyone that has made any comments about the video.
I'm going to try to keep it going here, as we're getting a little close on time, but I'll try to accelerate the next series of questions. These questions are set for our Board of Education trustees, Dr. Jamper, Ms. Kacal, and Ms. Nielsen, and our superintendent of schools, Dr. Hanni Piedmont. As a school district board of trustees here in Brewster, what do you think needs to happen in the community to address bigotry and hatred? But be for the trustees, obviously.
I think it really, to make it very simple, it starts at home. The school can do a lot of programs, we can put together assemblies, have presentations, have Democratic Congress come up, meet, come up with a great plan, but at the end of the day, it's the parents that really leave an impression on the kids. You have the kids in the morning, you get them at night after school, I do as well, and it's what we teach our kids that they are going to take and run home with. They're going to bring that to school, they're going to bring that out in the community. So, you know, as simple as it sounds to say, I think it's really up to us, and I think it takes us to do some soul-searching. I heard that before, and I think it's very true. You know, I grew up here in Brewster, and it was not diverse when I grew up. It is now diverse. It's a very diverse community, and we need to figure out how we all coexist, how we all get along, how we all respect each other, and how we embrace each other. The video is not representative of who we are, and it's an unfortunate mistake, but from this, we need to learn a lesson. And I think going forward, we need to really ask ourselves who we are as people, and who we want our kids to be.
As a parent in the community, we know, and studies have shown, a child learns more in the first five years of their life rather than the next 12. So who were they with the first five years? They're with me, and what I'm teaching them, and what I'm showing them. And the most important thing in my house, and you've heard it, and, you know, I'm sorry if it sounds the same, but I think it's the answer. Are they hearing love? Are they hearing acceptance? Or are they hearing hate and anger? What am I teaching them at home in that first five years? That's where their brains are formed. And then, you know, once they get into school, we've got thousands upon thousands of regulations. There is nothing, we can't turn a pencil without the state telling us you turned it the wrong way. So we're doing what we're supposed to do in the school. We need to make sure that what I'm doing at home supports this. And it's, it's easy to say, and we're all in agreement, but, you know, you have to think about it. I'm watching heads going like this, but I'm also watching heads going like this. I'm watching heads doing this. What are we showing them at home? People are talking, and we're giving up time. Are we showing each other love? I challenge us, what did we do on September 12th, 2001? What did we do after the hurricane hit when most of our neighbors had no electricity, no water, nothing? We were our best selves. Let's be our best selves on a regular Tuesday. Let's be our best, and that's who we are, not just after a tragedy, because we know we can be our best after a tragedy. I've seen this community come together. People walking in, whoever had water, there were 20 people lined up to take a shower in that house when there was no water. People, you know, after 9/11, people were going down in New York City from this community, helping. We had people from this community on the train who got injured, and people gave food. Let's be that best on a regular Tuesday.
I really can't add much more to what Mary Kay and Kristen just told us. I would say this, though, about that, those first five years are extremely formative, but I'll go back to the opening line, it takes a full community to raise a child. So, a parent-teacher association, we are very, very blessed here in Brewster with a very strong PTA. We each need to support each other in the raising of these children. We can't take a eye off the ball for a minute. We're up against the odds, and I'm not a fatalist, you know that. But society's got an edge on us, and they have things that we don't have. But you have the heart, and your kids know your heart. And these times, we go back to our strength, your heart.
Dr. Hanni Piedmont, as superintendent of schools, what do you tell students, say they feel ashamed, or angry, worried about the video, and how it may impact them?
We have heard students express their concerns about, you know, what their colleges are going to think about them when they apply next year. They're very aware of what's going on, what's been said, and I think we need to have conversations with them about the fact that they should continue to look at what happened, look at the lessons of what happened. There are lots of lessons in what occurred. I can't remember who alluded to it earlier, but drugs and alcohol play a role. And we are committed to helping our children to work through whatever might be, encouraging them to experiment and explore. We hired two mental health counselors for this school year to help us to address that issue. We hope to build programs, not only for children, but for our educators, so that we can identify those triggers and those, the signs that our children are having difficulty, so that we can stop that and address it. I think we also have to remind young people that video is not your friend when you are not saying the things that you should be saying, or doing the things that you should be doing. And I think really educating young people about the impact of their digital footprint, and making sure that whatever they do, that they're putting forth their best selves, and not finding themselves in situations where they're embarrassed, or someone can Google them, and that could be the difference between whether or not they get into college, or they are employed. I think we also have to remind them that, again, there are many great things that are occurring in this community, in this school district, and I think we have to encourage our children to continuously remember those good things. There are always going to be bad things, that's the nature of existence. But we have to encourage them to be involved in programs after school. There are lots and lots of after-school programs, and clubs, lots of activities that, so they can, where they can actually be exposed to other students, perhaps, that they don't live next to, that we can have good conversations with them. Our educators and everyone in our district, you know, are very talented at having conversations with children about these issues. And I think that's where it starts, in that they should not be ashamed, or afraid, or worried. We're here to care for them and make sure that they can make sense of this and go on and be the good young people that they can be. and be the good young people that they can be.
Thank you. I'm going to shift gears for a moment here and introduce a topic that is somewhat different than what we've discussed up to now, but it does relate to the district's effort to address its image. And it's a question that is on the table for the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools. Additionally, several members of the audience are here tonight to gain clarification about the district logo as it represents the 21st century skills as described in the district's strategic coherence plan. Specifically, what do you want the community to know about the new logo as it represents the Brewster schools and how it's going to be used to address the image of the school district?
About, and Valerie, correct me if my data's wrong, but I'm going about two years ago, we implemented a program, our strategic coherence plan. We had a committee of teachers, community members, volunteers, PTA. The committee was huge, and as time showed, it kind of dwindled down as people kind of flew away. But in the beginning, it was a very large community to see where is Brewster schools going to be in the 21st century. And I'm going to try and take two years' worth of work in about 30 seconds, and I'm just going to ask you to think about, what do you do in your home, in your work, in your leisure, that your parents did exactly the same way, that your grandparents did exactly the same way, and your great-grandparents did exactly the same way? Even peeling potatoes is something completely different than my great-grandmother did. You know what stayed the same? How we teach our children. It hasn't changed. A hundred and so years ago, more than 100 years ago, each student may have had a little blackboard, if they were lucky, in their place with chalk. Then we got the big chalkboard that the teachers could write on. And now, we're in the 21st century, and we have whiteboards. That's it, smartboards. We still teach with someone lecturing to rows and rows and rows of children. We've seen lots of memes on Facebook talking about, you have to educate the ones, you know, every child individually. You can't do that if you're just talking at rows and rows and rows of students. We have to do something different. So, that's what the strategic coherence plan came about. What is something different we have to do? Well, due to technology, every child can find out the date of the Boston Tea Party, like that. It's easy. Isn't it? See, even he knows it's easy. What they need to know that's more important than the date? Why did the Boston Tea Party take place? Who was involved in it? What did they set out to accomplish? What did England think of us when we dumped over that tea? How much money was wasted? How important was it? What about some of the people who lived in the colonies who were really annoyed that those people dumped that tea over? That was pretty valuable. Those are all lessons that matter. The date is almost immaterial. What I learned growing up was the date. And you know where that is? That's gone. I have my phone, I have to Google the date. My kids know the importance of it. And what we're hoping to show with the strategic coherence plan as we move forward, we committed to it two years ago, we're just still doing it. This is an exciting thing right now that everyone's listening to. It was boring two years ago when we started it, when we implemented it a year ago, when Valerie and her goals committed to making sure everyone started talking the talk and walking the walk. So, that's really what this is all about, is teaching children, the kindergartners right now, we're preparing them for jobs that don't even exist. I'm sorry, Valerie, I took your sentence. That's my favorite way to explain it. There are jobs that don't even exist. Do you know how to educate them for that? I don't. Because it's not enough just to teach them the date of the Boston Tea Party. They're going to have to learn to relate to people they don't even know in China, that they don't even understand why they're thinking the way they're thinking. And they're going to have to figure that out.
I know time is becoming an issue, so I will keep this very brief. The pendulum, I was a former educator, and the pendulum, as most people know, swings from one side to the other, and the times change, and something new comes along, something goes away when someone new comes in. What I have to say about the strategic coherence plan and the logo and the slogan is that this is its stamp, this is its mark of three years of work that a group of people collectively have put together. This work is, I have to say, somewhere in the middle in terms of where the pendulum is swinging, because typically, you've had people focus on academics and education. Everything is academics. This is academics, this is social and emotional. If you don't have the complete child with you on a daily basis mentally, emotionally, emotionally, the academics are moot. So, this plan, and I can tell you from experience, I have worked in districts where we've done plans similar, and they go up on a shelf, and they collect dust, and nothing happens to them until a three-year review comes along, and someone's coming in to see how you're doing on your plan. This is not the case. This is a plan that has legs, it's moving, it's growing, changes happening, all for the better, all to prepare our kids, my kids, your kids, for what comes next in the future.
As was mentioned at the beginning of the session, the district has requested and has elicited questions from the community. Those cards will be collected, and a document will be prepared that will allow the community to see the responses to their respective questions. I know that there was a commitment to end at or about 6:30, and we're there at this point. And I know the board has a meeting that follows immediately after. So, in terms of a mechanism, if we could have those who are participating in that role to collect those cards, and we'll get them to the district leadership, and they will organize a question-and-answer document that can be distributed, it would be greatly appreciated. Closing comments?
This is not a national meeting. It's not your job to raise my child. It's my job. And a lot of people, a lot of people, well, in this school district, normally, my maintenance recognizes me, my maintenance, I'm a neighbor. I went through the school district, my kids have. A school district is only as good as the parent that backs it up. If we don't back them, they're not doing their job right either. And this was God, Italian, it was for them to pat us on the back and say, "We got this." They don't know, because we got this. And we're the government, and we're taxpayers, we pay their salaries. We're the force, they're not. I was a PTA person, I was a classmate, I was a boys' teacher, a girls' teacher. And like I said, a lot of these teachers in this district, Louie, the commander, Judy Killery, the Burke Room, I went, yeah, back in the day, my job was to do a parenting class. It's not my job to parent your children, that's your job. Their job is to educate, not parent. If we don't parent our children, then they can't educate. And the logo has nothing to do with the education. Why change something that's not for... I have this in this, my children learn these things. That's not my sport, it's my sport to educate.
One thing's abundantly obvious, is it not the best place to end? We obviously have more talking to do. I'm hearing what you're saying about more talk coming from the floor up this way. So, what do you say, we have another meeting? Tonight? Tonight? Tonight, we're running up. Right, but the one thing you're going to learn is chaos does not rule. So, we're going to end, as we said, if we agree to have another meeting, we can do that.
The flag that they send to us. Or I'll have them run it up, and we should have a conference forum and speak.
Okay, so, okay, so we'll have, we'll have another opportunity to do that then. No one is saying that we're done, that's for sure. Thank you for being here.